Okay, good evening, everyone. It is parking violations. That fee was proposed to go to fifty dollars. I know there was some discussion about thirty-five. I believe the current rate is thirty?
Thirty.
I think fifty dollars is excessive.
I think we talked about having it at thirty.
It is thirty right now.
Keeping it at thirty.
Keeping it at thirty, okay.
I'd like to recommend that we keep it at thirty.
Ross, do you have any input on that? I know you deal with that a lot more than me.
Well, actually, I don't. That's considered a petty misdemeanor and it's not something that's processed through the court system. It's an administrative penalty. And I think the thought was that just because of inflation, thirty dollars doesn't bite very hard nowadays. So if we have somebody that's, well, typical case would be a snowbird or somebody parking and blocking someone's driveway. Now, I guess I can't give you numbers, the chief. But I don't know how many parking tickets are issued each year or under what circumstances. Another part of that is that depending on the parking violation, sometimes sooner or later, it also involves a vehicle being towed and impounded. And then there's additional charges for that.
Well, he's got his police report from last month. There was eleven.
Eleven last month?
In November.
Of parking violations?
According to the police report, eleven. And maybe, do we have a snow one in November?
That's five hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah, there was a snow one. They were towing him. They were towing him.
So on top of their parking, they probably got it towed too.
I would say it's probably peaked in two situations. One is the first snow and the first time. You know, we don't understand the rules. And the other is the new wave of high school drivers every fall. But I think that issue has been somewhat, I would expect, has been somewhat solved by the new parking situation at the school, which is much improved. And this is just anecdotal, but just my driving. I don't see nearly as many cars parked up and down. Parked halfway into somebody's driveway. Those are the issues we always used to see at the beginning of every school year until we went through the educational process again. Could we have a two-tier system? Thirty dollars for the first parking ticket, fifty for the second, and the third one you'd be in jail for thirty days.
That's three tiers.
How about we have?
Three tiers.
How about we have Chief chime in on this one?
We're just talking about the parking violation, the increase to fifty bucks, so chime in.
Let's see. So we had talked about it at the committee, that maybe that might be a little too steep and thought maybe thirty-five dollars is an increase. There was other examples, I'm guessing, that were brought up?
Well, this ridiculous one over here.
Well, I was gonna look at two-tier, but it turned out to be a three-tier. Thirty dollars for the first, fifty for the second, and thirty days in jail for the third violation.
That's pretty excessive.
But a progressive, something like that makes sense though, because if you have the snowbird or whatever that's leaving their vehicle there all winter and, you know, you know, that makes sense. It gives them maybe a little more incentive each time to move their vehicle or.
How much of a notification headache would that be if you have to determine, is this the first offense or the second offense? Is that a?
With the computer systems, it'd be reasonable, reasonably okay to, you know, type in the license plate and it would come up, show a past violation, or we could check by address, and we can also check by name.
So it would be doable?
It would be relatively doable, yeah.
Would it be per year? Or it wouldn't follow you along?
Ben, you're getting complicated down there.
On that same.
That's a good point.
It is a good point, because on that same note, that's one of the deals that we have with the ordinance, the code violation, the nuisances. And that's a question that I would pose back to Ross as well, is, you know, every year we kind of wipe the slate clean and we say, okay, now we're gonna do this all over again. And we do have those repeat offenders that, in all honesty, I guess I would like to see that we don't have to start over again every year. So it might not be a bad idea.
Carry it on.
That you.
Maybe you have some, like a five-year limit.
I was gonna say, have a limit.
Because there are, there are some repeats.
Okay, well, if we're not gonna leave fifty there, we need some consensus as to what you want to change it to.
I'd put thirty-five there, inflation.
For the first offense?
For just straight across the board.
Just totally, straight across the board.
Maybe we can look into it more.
And look into it through the committee.
I don't know if we have to decide that or no.
Maybe next year, come up with a plan. It's, it is a good, it is a good suggestion. However, there's gotta be times limit or forgiveness limit. Like if there's no tickets in a year, whatever that time may be, then you start over or something.
I'd concede to the thirty-five dollar fee.
We okay with that or?
Strike the thirty days in jail.
So we'll put thirty-five on that line, get rid of the fifty, all right, okay.
The next item is vehicle storage. Twenty-five dollars a day, inside or outside, plus whatever the towing fee may be. Replacement of sign as a result of a traffic accident. Two hundred dollars billable to the driver or the insurance. We've recently had a few of those and Ross has been very helpful in helping us to get those resolved, but it takes time and money to make it happen, so just trying to recoup some of the city's expenses. Last item underneath the miscellaneous licenses and fees is chipping. Fifteen dollars plus one dollar a minute, plus tax.
When they're charged.
So if tree limb comes down and you want the city staff to chip that and get it out of the yard, that's when you would.
They can't drive a truck over there for fifteen dollars.
Oh, you're looking, you're thinking of a minimum? Well, definitely, I think if they're called out or someone requests chipping, that time starts when they start hooking up to the chipper. And to get there, you know, they wouldn't be hooking up to the chipper if that request wouldn't be there, so.
So if it takes them forty-five minutes, they're looking at sixty dollars roughly. Pretty cheap tree removal.
Yeah, nobody's chipping branches that are small enough to go in there. The dollar a minute, does that seem, a dollar a minute for everything over fifteen? Or what is it? Fifteen plus a dollar a minute?
I guess fifteen minutes.
That's a flat fifteen plus a dollar a minute.
I guess I'd classify that as like a service to the residents, almost like a free compost pile.
Yeah, and it really is. When the storm goes through, they are driving around neighborhoods chipping and there's no charge to the residents at that time, so. So it'd just be on a more individual request.
Can I go back up to the vehicle storage of twenty-five dollars? Is this a towing company that stores, tows, stores the vehicle?
No, that would be a separate, separate deal. So what happens when we tow a vehicle for, say, a snow emergency? Afterburners will come out and they'll take the vehicle to their lot and they will be given a receipt that says you can release their vehicle as soon as the owner calls. And if that's two days, that's a storage fee that goes to afterburners. If we have a situation where we have a DUI or a narcotics arrest and it ends up being the potential for a seizure of that vehicle, we then would ask afterburners to take the vehicle and drop it off at one of our storage locations. We've used the old police department on the backside of the museum now to keep it in a secure facility. And then we would keep that vehicle for X number of days in order for it to process. The reason that we were either adding or increasing, I don't know if we've even charged anybody for it in the most recent past, was I don't think there's been any increases, but we're taking up space. And it's an inconvenience for us to have to move that around and deal with it. And hopefully it helps to expedite some of that process and then recoup some of the fees that go with the forfeiture process. So we've had a couple vehicles where Ross has strategically negotiated with the defense attorney and minimized the number of days that we've had to actually keep that vehicle. And we've been turning them around within three months, four months about. Instead of a typical forfeiture process that could last a year, a year and a half, in order for it to go through the court system. So on our end of it, we're just looking at trying to recoup some of the costs that go with this whole process. And we charge twenty-five dollars a day and I think afterburners, it's over forty.
How much?
Over forty is what I believe. So considerably less, but yet we're still offering, we still have the same service and we keep it secured.
Okay.
Okay, okay with that one?
Yep.
Moving on to the third page, a police report via paper or fax is fifteen dollars. Police report in a digital media format is five dollars per DVD. Do you have anything to add to that, John?
Just to touch on, every time we get a insurance request for a copy of an accident, it takes, you know, some time. And Vicki's gotta stop what she's doing for the day and/or myself, and we gotta take and make a copy of it. We need to fax it out. It's not a huge burden, but it does take time. We get probably anywhere from four to six of those maybe a week, depending on how many accidents we've had. Obviously, during the wintertime, the more accidents we have, the subsequent months after that, we're gonna get even more of them. So with digital evidence available, when we get in a request for a full case file, they may want a copy of the pictures that we took at the time that maybe the vehicle was towed, or the, if it's an accident, all the photos that we took. They may even want the watch guard video that's from the squad car. And all of that just is an additional time consumption, so that should justify those dollars, I think.
The next item is a police response to a subpoena. Fifty dollars an hour plus mileage. And then paper service is limited to only within the city limits and only for evictions and family dispute matters of conflict, in which case that would be forty dollars. John, anything?
On the, what was the first one that was listed on there?
Subpoena.
Subpoena.
The subpoena fees. So just to touch base on that, we can be subpoenaed to go to court for any trial or any criminal proceeding that we may be involved in with Ross or the county attorney's office, and that would be a local civil county deal. If we respond to a traffic accident and we take measurements and we take some statements and that turns out to be a civil litigation, we may be asked to come to testify. And if we have that documented in our fee scale as this is how much money we charge for that testimony, it just sets us up for recovery and some of the time away that the officers would be spending. So it's more of a civil deal that would be relating to an expert testimony on the officer's part. It's not what we would be testifying to with a normal criminal proceeding, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, so there's that side of that. And then the other part of it is, there's times where we have a request for a eviction notice and the timeliness of getting them out is, it's at the end of the month and if we wait a few more days. So the benefits can be that if certain law or lawyer agencies request a paper service or if a family comes down and says, I've, I'm in a domestic situation, I don't think it's safe for anybody to go over there and hand this paper to the, my ex or the other, or whatever it would be, would you do it? This would open us up to be able to handle those situations. We don't wanna get into the process of serving papers for the county, which they do daily and they charge a fee and they're running all over the place, but I figured it's something that we can offer.
Was there some discussion about maybe going higher on that cost?
When we had our police committee meeting, there was a discussion of maybe making that a sixty-dollar fee.
Multiple trips.
And like per paper service type thing. I guess I would leave that up to, I think Ross had mentioned that the county charges about.
Well, my past experience is they charge a base fee of forty plus mileage. But if it's in city limits, mileage would be negligible, so.
So, you know, we were throwing around the idea that if we would put sixty on there and then we also offer a suggestion that the county does it for forty, you know, there's always an option.
So you really don't wanna do it, but if you have to.
We, yeah, we will.
Yeah, yeah. Is everyone okay with that or would you like to set it a little higher or? Good?
It isn't something that comes up very often.
Moving on to page four, the mileage rate at what should be twenty-three cents a mile, I believe.
Thank you, not twenty-three dollars a mile?
So we will make that correction.
I'll try.
And that's for what mileage for?
If for using your personal vehicle. I believe that the reason why that is set at that rate is because there is a city vehicle that individuals are encouraged to use when they can. Under community center fees, rental fees will not be charged for any organization having a city-related budget. This came up in an earlier discussion as we were talking with the fire department and the ambulance. And they felt that they were a part of the city, but yet they were being charged for events where they were trying to raise funds to pay for their own equipment. So the change that came out of that was making this designation, that if they are, if they do have a budget with the city, that they would not be charged fees, so that is.
I think that came out of a community center committee meeting, so.
Can we go back to the ambulance, the mileage thing?
Yep.
So it's a, like all these things say seven fifty plus mileage. Are we sure that that twenty-three dollars a mile isn't for the ambulance to charge? I mean, because if we're gonna send an ambulance somewhere, I can't imagine we charge twenty-three cents a mile.
Yeah, we aren't talking about reimbursing somebody or for their use of their own vehicle. We're talking about ambulance service.
The actual ambulance.
I think you're right.
Yep, yep.
So it is twenty, sorry, Michelle.
Back to twenty-three, twenty-three dollars.
For the ambulance, yes.
Or just verify that that's correct, that's what I assume.
Yeah, I believe that you are correct.
Yeah, I think so.
It's under the ambulance fees, so yeah, that would make sense.
It is, but then if you look at those charges all the way down, it says seven hundred and fifty dollars plus mileage.
And then the mileage rate is twenty-three dollars.
Twenty-three dollars?
Twenty-three dollars a mile.
Twenty-three dollars a mile?
Is that what it says?
Yeah, let's just verify and make sure that that's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah, we just need to double check that.
I wanna drive an ambulance.
You know, it could be right.
And personnel.
I could be right. So the only thing changed on this resolution, how it's printed right now is a thirty-five dollar fee for parking fee.
Right.
Everything else stays the same. I'll make that motion to change that, introduce Resolution seventy-nine twenty eighteen, adopting a schedule of fees and charges for various services, licenses, and permits. I wanna add to that if we could make sure that the fee for mileage under the ambulance is correct.
A second.
Caught me off guard here, Batcher. Those are ready for you.
So those two changes again, Michelle, were the thirty-five dollar.
Parking?
Parking.
Parking fee and verifying ambulance.
Just verifying the ambulance mileage rate, yep.
All right, Councilmember Batcher introduced Resolution seventy-nine dash twenty eighteen. It is a resolution adopting a schedule of fees and charges for various services, licenses, and permits. And of course, it would have the changes that were talked about indicated. Is, let's see, it was seconded by a council member.
Cowell?
Cowell, okay. By Councilmember Cowell. Any more questions, discussion? Hearing none, vote by rule call. Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski. Councilmember Batcher?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one member absent. Resolution is adopted. Item number sixteen, approved, deny, Resolution eighty-two twenty eighteen, approving fund transfer.
Counselors, I have taken a look at the balances that we have in some of these accounts. And Resolution eighty-two thousand and eighteen has what was basically set out to be approved at the beginning of the year. Based on some of the numbers that I have seen, I'm going to recommend that maybe we modify those just based on the balances that we do have. So I'll go through the ones that I'm, I'm changing or recommending that you change. The first one is from the general fund to the fire fund. We had initially planned to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars into that account. I'm recommending that you change that number to thirty thousand. We currently have a balance of a hundred and thirty-four, or we will have a balance of a hundred and thirty-four thousand in that account. Based on discussions with state auditors, the recommendation is that we keep approximately four to six months of expenses in that account. If we were looking at six months, which would be on the high side, that number would be about sixty-nine thousand dollars that we should have in that account. And that's why I'm recommending that we maybe move that number down a little bit from seventy-five down to thirty thousand that we transfer over into the fire fund.
And it's coming, coming from where again?
It's coming from the general fund.
General to fire, okay, got it.
I have a question. So on this resolution, it says from general fund to fire fund, and it's stating seventy-five thousand, so is that not what it should be stating?
That's what it does state, that's what we had initially planned. And I'm suggesting that you modify that to thirty thousand based on the amount of money that's available in the fund balance.
So the fund is in good shape and we just need a thirty thousand?
Correct. Correct.
Shouldn't say just, but.
The second part of my modified recommendation is the ambulance fund. We had initially planned to transfer thirty-five thousand. What I'm recommending is that we transfer fifteen thousand from the general fund to the ambulance fund. The ambulance fund will have approximately two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And if we follow the advice of our auditors of maintaining a four to six-month balance, a six-month balance would be about a hundred and fifty thousand. And like I said, we current, we will have two hundred and thirty-seven thousand in that account. So I think we are more than comfortable transferring fifteen thousand over to the ambulance fund. Typically, what we've done in the past is these funds have been relied upon to cover operating costs. And so that's why we've made the transfer. One of the big changes that we had happen in the last year is that we had a daytime shift, which we started out two thousand and eighteen with. And then we, through the course of happenings, we did away with that. So I think we're in a comfortable position if we do change that number from thirty-five to fifteen thousand. And then I would continue with the full amount of transfer that's outlined for the remaining accounts.
On the resolution eighty-two twenty eighteen, resolution transferring city funds, changing the fund transferring from general to fire, from seventy-five to thirty thousand dollars from the general to the ambulance fund, from thirty-five to fifteen dollars, the rest of the month staying the same.
Second.
Resolution eighty dash twenty eighteen was introduced by Councilmember Batcher, seconded by Councilmember Cowell. And that is a resolution dealing with a fund, approving a fund transfer with the numbers, the amended numbers being, instead of seventy-five thousand going from general fund to fire fund, it would be thirty thousand. Instead of thirty-five thousand going from general fund to ambulance, it would be fifteen thousand. All the other numbers on your sheet would be the same. Any further discussion? Hearing none, vote by rule call, Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batcher.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one member absent. Resolution is adopted. Resolution twenty, or eighty-one dash twenty eighteen, dealing with assessments.
Councilmembers, you may recall that we got busy last year at this, around the same time. Because of some challenges that we had, we did not get the utilities for two thousand and seventeen to the county in a timely manner, therefore, we were unable to charge back. We have done that correctly this year. So included in your resolution is both two thousand and seventeen as well as two thousand and eighteen charges for services and different things that we have tried to collect on, have not been able to. And we would like, through your approval, to go ahead and to submit them to the county auditor so that they can be assessed to the property. Notice has been provided to all these individuals in advance and they were invited to this meeting.
I'll introduce Resolution eighty-one twenty eighteen, ordering the filing of assessments.
Second.
Councilmember Batcher introduced Resolution eighty-one dash twenty eighteen. It was seconded by Councilmember Cowell. The resolution is dealing with the filing of assessments. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, vote by rule call, Councilmember Batcher.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yep.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one member absent. Resolution is adopted. Item number eighteen, approve Resolution eighty-two dash twenty eighteen of write-offs.
Councilmembers, I accidentally left that on. That should have been something that was deleted from the agenda, so.
Okay, nothing on that?
Should we make a motion to table it till the next meeting?
If, actually, if you would, please just table it. Part of the information that we're waiting for is coming from the ambulance, which Annie has been doing. Annie, I believe, will be back in the first week of January, so. I'm not sure if there's a timeline as to when the write-offs need to be approved, but I will double check and do more work. So if we could just table it indefinitely.
You want a motion to table it or you just want to?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Second.
If we can check to make sure that it doesn't need to be done by the end of the year or something.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, seconded by Councilmember Highland, to table action on Resolution eighty-two dash twenty eighteen, write-offs. Motion by Councilmember Batchra, seconded by Councilmember Highland to table action on resolution eighty-two dash twenty eighteen, write-offs. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Okay, at this time, I think Chief Pedersen, would you want to do, Red, do you have some other things to report on? We skipped your report at the time when it was on the agenda, so.
I'm guessing it got included with the packet or one way statistics. Just where the invention, statistics from November twenty eighteen to, or twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen. We were at a hundred and thirty-three calls in twenty seventeen. This year we are at two hundred and seventy-four for November. As of twenty seventeen, it was two thousand and three, and we're up above a thousand more, two thousand nine hundred ninety-one at the end of November. Just an update on the, I guess, the garage. It's almost completed. It's in data right now and is usable. I thank you again for that. We've been doing some work on the side on weekends and making some progress. Some, I stopped down and see if you haven't want to, but you do. As far as anything else goes, things are rolling ahead. And we made it through the arduous without any major issues. Weather helped us out there, keep the numbers down. Not really had too much, too much more going on right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Just a question, what is citation money? Where does it go?
Typically, funds that go in to our, from our citations, they go to the courthouse, and they're collected there. And then they're dispersed in a percentage. Some goes to the courts, some goes to the county attorney, the city attorney. And then some of it, a very little bit of it, comes back to the agencies that actually write it. If there's anything more that I can pick apart on that.
I don't get any. It depends on how the case is disposed of. If, if it's a straight fine situation, I think, well, for example, a speed ticket, there might be a base hundred dollar fine. That's split fifty-fifty, the county and the city. So the county keeps fifty, the city gets fifty. The county always adds on top of that an eighty-five dollar surcharge to the court system. And that's a state mandate. And the court system keeps that surcharge. So it's not technically part of the fine, but from the offender's viewpoint, it doesn't matter. So if it's a hundred dollar ticket, it's going to cost him a hundred and eighty-five bucks. But we get half of every standard fine. Now, if we do a plea deal with a defendant, and there's various elements that go into that. You know, we always interact with the police on those things to determine their view. But one advantage to the city, for example, of giving the defendant probation, is we can give them what are called court costs. We don't call it a fine. It's called court costs because they're not being currently convicted. We get a hundred percent of that. So if it's court costs, two hundred bucks, it all goes to the city. Now, where it goes to the city, I don't know. It's not going to me.
Sure.
I think it goes to the chief.
Well, there's, there's different percentage of breakups, I think, also depending on like a seizure. There can be drug forfeitures, which some of that then comes back into a, you could speak more intelligently on it than I can. But drug forfeitures are handled a little bit differently with more of a direct back to the agency, I think.
Yeah, and I can't really speak too much about that because the county handles the drug forfeitures. City attorneys don't prosecute the drug cases unless it's minor amounts. But DUI forfeitures, we can seize a vehicle that's involved in a DUI stop, depending on the level of offense. You know, if the guy's had a couple previous, you know, it becomes a gross misdemeanor. And then we can seize the vehicle that was involved. And that's where, as the chief had mentioned earlier, it's more efficient in a lot of these cases to just do a settlement through the defense attorney. Instead of going through the whole forfeiture process, which takes a long time and more city resources. What we'll do is the chief will get a blue book value of the vehicle, and will, sometimes, for example, will say to the defendant's attorney, well, here's the blue book value. If you pay us fifty percent of that, the guy can get his vehicle back. We kind of cut through all the red tape and, and you know, get, get some funds for the city. And in case of a forfeiture case like that, the money all goes to the city. It doesn't go to the county or the court system. An outstanding example of that is, we had a guy many years ago who had a DUI on a fairly new Harley Davidson motorcycle. And that was the love of his life. And I think it probably blue booked at, you know, twenty, twenty-five thousand. He bargained to get it back to him for fifteen thousand. And that all went to the city's coffers. But that's kind of unusual. Unfortunately, in a lot of these cases, well, this, this was one out of Green Isle, not Arlington, but. The gal in that case left part of her bumper in a cornfield. She eventually made it to Green Isle with what was left of her vehicle. It was a DUI case, it was forfeited to the city. Eventually, it brought a couple hundred bucks for salvage value, I think. So that's, I'd say, probably a more typical example.
I kind of got involved, fellow from Belle Plaine called me, that there was a forfeiture of a fairly new Corvette, like a one or two-year-old Corvette that had been forfeited, and had been sitting in storage for about a year and a half. And then the city finally got it, and it went through the auction, and he wanted me to buy it for him. And he said, well, I'll pay thirty thousand for it. Well, it went for like about forty or forty-five thousand. And I think all that money probably went to Belle Plaine. And somebody is crying in their beer about losing a Corvette.
On drug seizures, too, if there's cash that gets seized, there's another split that some of it comes back. I think at the end of the day, the courts get their share for time and justify it with, you know, if the county attorney prosecuted it or anything. But there are drug forfeiture monies that come back to agencies, and then a lot of times they're designated specifically for the police department to use those for funds for further investigations or different types of expenditures. But when they come back to the city, I'm not sure, Pat, where do they land?
Where do they land?
I did ask Lisa, and they said they go into the police budget.
They do, okay.
So.
So that's a line item for the.
That's where they should be going.
That's where they should be.
I was looking for the line item, and I didn't see one that made a whole lot of, I mean, it didn't stand out to me as being, you know, where it would go. Legal, legal fee.
They've been good.
Income.
So I will, I will verify.
That's something I can't speak to either because it doesn't.
I'll verify where it's coming.
Go through my office. It goes right from the court to the city. Uh, no, it's possible. I would guess the court's accounting system would be able to provide us with a, let's say, a year-end total of how much fines
I think so.
were sent over to the city.
Now, when you say courts in Minnesota, the whole court system in Minnesota is, is state, state-run, is it that?
State-run, and these rules are statewide.
Right.
It's not simply county court who.
It used to be, a number of years ago, right? Wasn't it, wasn't there local?
There was more, many, many years ago, yeah. It's all very standardized statewide now.
There you are, John. Court, court fines. So six thousand five hundred and ninety is what you got in sixteen.
And I would guess that's going to be way up, you know, with the increased police activity.
So that's. Going into your budget.
Yeah.
Good.
Hey, hey, there you go. A little something.
There we are.
Be curious if that's something I need to inquire with the courts? That's just a balance that's added.
That would be good, good to have the answer to. Yeah, I'd be curious.
Okay, any other questions for the chief?
Did we want to look at that, item number twenty-three while the chief is here?
Yeah, we could do that. We could do that. Item number, we'll jump to item number twenty-three, and then after that, we are going to close the meeting for employee, employee reviews. But before we do that, we'll move to item twenty-three, approved, denied, police department purchase of a twenty-sixteen Ford utility police interceptor.
I do have a handout for that. John, you want to start out, or I?
Why don't you open it? Keep the direction of where you want to head.
Okay. One of the issues that we've been talking about, especially as it pertains to the budget, is the squad car. And trying to find a suitable replacement for the existing car that has been plagued by problems in addition to requiring the chief to jumpstart the car. And so, looking at different options, we found out that we're unable to go ahead and buy through state contract a squad car at this point for two thousand and nineteen. So John has been looking at other options and came across, I think, in collaboration with Councilmember Highland, came across a two thousand sixteen Ford utility police interceptor vehicle. We had previously gone from sixty thousand down to forty-five thousand in our capital improvement plan, trying to anticipate what the cost would be to get a new vehicle to add to the fleet. Looking at a used vehicle, that number has come down even more. In addition to purchasing the used vehicle, which you have in front of you, John has estimated that there would be additional costs of moving the equipment over, working with the existing watch guard system, but not in the, in having a similar piece of equipment, but actually having a, a body camera that you can take with you as well as using the squad car. Based on what he believes is needed to bring that vehicle up to standard where it could be used, we have come up with a number of about twenty-eight thousand five hundred. So that would include purchasing the vehicle, which is, has an asking price of seventeen thousand nine hundred, outfitting it with the equipment that is needed, as well as replacing tires of a twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. With that said, John or Jim, do you have anything further?
I met John last week over at Jim Carlson Leasing, and we looked it over and drove it. And for a two-year-old vehicle with a few miles on it, it was in pretty nice shape, pretty nice shape. I think if we can save fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, it's worth the money.
So, just to start, we can't get a new vehicle? Or we just can't get one on the state bid?
We couldn't get a Ford.
Okay.
We could get a Dodge SUV, yeah, Dodge SUV, the, oh, what's the name of it again?
The Durango?
The Durango. Or we could get a Charger, a four-door sedan Charger.
Okay. Are they not making the Ford?
They're not making.
For this year?
Well, they're making the twenty-nineteens, but then they're redoing the whole design. What happened is back in October of twenty eighteen, they closed the state bids, is what I'm understanding, and every car that's being built for squad cars is already assigned and taken by agencies. At the end of the year, mid-year, could there maybe be something available? You know, I, I don't know.
Right, yeah, that's hard to know.
But at this point, I called the, the state and asked them about the leasing program. That seems quite high as well. It would minimize the yearly cost of the vehicle, but in the end, you're still paying pretty much full dollars and then some. Benefits of that would obviously be, you've got the full warranty that goes with it. The vehicle that we found is a twenty-sixteen, the picture you guys are seeing was used in a college setting, so it doesn't have a whole lot of, of use to it. If we book up a similar year, we're seeing that they're twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five thousand. So the price, I think, is pretty decently listed. They have the all-wheel drive, be able to get around. We're looking at some other things to try and save money as well. And when we're talking about the camera system, they make a, a watch guard body camera, which I'm not a big fan of getting them and moving to them entirely, but eventually, I'm guessing, we're going to have to, event, anyways. But if we get this body cam, we don't have to set this car up with a full watch guard system like we have. So if you compare the full system that we have in each of the squad cars, they're fifty-five hundred dollars right now. And to save us from doing that, when we're going to dismantle the Impala at some point in time, we can get a fourteen, fifteen hundred dollar lapel mic, and it'll set in its charging cradle on the squad car like a dash cam. And when we get out, we just take it out and put it on us, and then we're recording our audio and video and everything the same as what the squad car is kind of doing right now. At a savings of almost four thousand dollars or three thousand some dollars. So we're looking at some other options too, and the thing that I'd also like to do with this vehicle is keep it red, not have it covered, and use it more as an undercover, not undercover, a class B unmarked vehicle that we could use for, you know, sitting downtown, sitting on drug houses. A little less conspicuous, and save some money also in having to wrap it.
But on the other side, you have to license it then, and you have to pay tax.
If we have a marking on the one side of it that says police department, and it has lights in it, so it would have a full light setup.
Okay.
Then I think we can, we were talking about that today with the dealer, and there's other agencies that are doing it as well. And as long as it has a minimal marking on it, and it can be pretty inconspicuous, but it's got full lights, full siren, they're just all inside.
Okay.
Then we still can get away with that, and I don't think we have to pay taxes on it either.
Okay, yeah, undercover ones you do, but if, there, there could be a loophole.
Yeah. So it would be what's considered a, a class B, but like troopers are driving around in a Chevy Impala. It's got full lights on it, and when you light it up, it's noticeable, and it says State of Minnesota on it. Could even have tax exempt plates on it, and then we should be good. So, there's a few other things that we're looking at, trying to not create more expense as well. That Chevy Impala, once that's going to be stripped down, the cage that's in there is not going to be able to be put in any other vehicle. On the flip side, if we were to buy a brand-new twenty-nineteen Ford, the cage that we have in our twenty-seventeen would fit in there. But anything after twenty-nineteen, it sounds like they're remodeling or redoing the whole setup. So everything that we have is going to need to be reshaped or reconfigured to fit the twenty-twenty's and forward as well.
Can you give us an update on the Impala, how it's working, or what, you know, how, really, you're, you're.
Um, I'm, I'm driving it every day. My hope is to take and put that as our primary patrol car and drive it. Drive it and drive it, um, until it doesn't thrive anymore. It has the highest miles on it. I think we said we were at seventy, seventy.
Six or something.
Seventy-six right now. The other Ford was at.
Uh, less than, less than thirty, yeah, twenty.
It was under thirty, yeah, twenty-three thousand, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, since a year and four, five, six months that we've got it. So if we can take that Impala and we can kind of put that out in front and be using. So if we can take that Impala and we can kinda put that out in front and be using that majority of the time when the weather is nice and the roads are, you know, not slippery and snow covered and everything else, then we can use the Explorer in addition, and if we take this one and just kinda keep it on the side, ready to go, and I can drive it, so it doesn't have the the abuse of general patrol until we absolutely need it, um, that's kinda what we were thinking.
Um, just looking at the Carfax, I mean, I'm kinda leery. Shows an accident and two damages and a tow. But that's just, that's me.
What kinda accidents? That wasn't disclosed.
Doesn't. It doesn't say. Says there was an accident on Ju- live two thousand seventeen, didn't, airbags did not deploy, so that's good. And then there was damage in February two thousand seventeen, and damage in January two thousand and eighteen, and it had to be towed. So I mean, if, if we're gonna, you know, if we're gonna wait for the Impala, or if we're gonna use the Impala and kinda set this aside, I guess personally, I'd rather spend a little more money and get something that doesn't have you know, issue or past issues, and, and it could be all fine, but I just don't wanna take a chance on a fifty thousand mile vehicle.
Thoughts, anyone else?
Well, I hear ya, I mean, that if it's undisclosed to you, are they trying to hide something from ya? I mean, the price is right, but I don't know.
Yeah, I've never looked anything up on Carfax, so I'm not uh.
It's, it's right on their website, on, well, the, the place where Carlson Leasing, right on their website, they have it.
I'm not checked anything.
Oh, there's a link to Carfax, yeah?
I guess we went up and drove it, um, everything seems to be tight and everything, there's, you know, a couple of dings, not dents, but a couple of scratches, I guess, that had been on there, looked like they've been repaired. Jim said that there had been a dent on the one back bumper, but they repaired that. Looking underneath it, looking around it, I mean, it looked pretty sound and it sure drove solid, um.
I know at the police committee, Tom and I both were behind it, so recommendation was to purchase it.
Well, and it, like you said, it is under book, I mean, by a considerable amount, so that maybe is, is why, because it has been in some incidents.
Did you ask the question of the, the one selling the car?
Well, I guess we didn't, we talked about, you know, the, the history of it, where it was leased through the college. They said that um Jim's leasing had bought it brand-new, and they turned around then and then leased it. He explained how they do their leasing with intentions to make some money.
Just to assure residents that we are trying to take into consideration that noise travels differently in different weather. We also wanna, at the end of the day, have a report that we can share with residents. So regardless of whether or not Northland drying is within the allowable range or not, to be able to show them that we've done our due diligence in terms of, of following up and, and getting a high-quality testing, uh, some of you may be aware that you can get some testing devices on your phone. That's an option, but this would actually involve individuals possibly coming out with uh, equipment that they would leave on-site for a period of a day or two. They would then take it back and try and remove some of the other noise, but really measure the, the noise that's coming from Northland drying. So, the proposals are included, they include having a, at the end, having a conference call with the city as well as Northland drying. It includes them wanting to get into Northland drying to take a look at their equipment and how they're using it. The two proposals, um, the one from ESI Engineering for, and here you do have an option of doing a, a short-term measurement, which is when they just come out and they'll take the, the reading at that time. They'll measure for short periods of one to ten minutes, and then they'll, they'll, that's their, their answer. The other one is longer term, which would be two, three days, having a piece of equipment out there that's continuously recording. First one is a cost of three thousand two hundred, the second option is for a cost of four thousand five hundred. The other one hickey would basically do a very similar process. The cost for that would be three thousand seven hundred and two dollars. That was for a one-time testing, if they were to come out and to do a prolonged testing, the cost would be about the cost of another trip, so you'd probably be looking at about six thousand for them to do the prolonged testing.
Oh, really?
Yep. We'd follow up with them to find that out, so.
I did a little groundwork on, on some of this testing, and maybe you already know it, but if we just had our decimal meter on our cellphone, you go out there and you get a reading, and that doesn't really tell you anything. It tells you it's making noise, but I guess they test it over a period of time. You know, it's like the train going down a railroad tracks, when they go through town, they make a lot of noise, but they don't make that noise all day or twelve hours a day or two hours a day. So, as I understand that the testing is on a high and low, and they kinda take the average as to what, what the decimal readings are. So even though maybe at one point it may be loud, there's another point where it's not, so.
But if the loud really exceeds what they can exceed, they have to fix that piece, right? I mean, they can't be run, well, I mean, I'm just saying, they can't be running over the levels that the state regulations have put out, regardless.
Probably not for a long period of time, I mean, it might peak it, but it couldn't, I don't think you could run it for six hours over the.
Right, so, right. So, I mean, we definitely have to do something, and I'm, I am totally for an extended reading, because I mean, I don't think that we're gonna get a true reading with just being here for ten, fifteen minutes here, ten, fifteen minutes there. It needs to sit there for two, three days and different parts of town, because, I mean, even up here, you can hear it some mornings, all the way up here.
There's a difference.
It just, it's like they're races, right, I mean, some days you hear them, some days they sound like they're in my backyard, some days I can't hear them at all.
The train only goes by in a few minutes and it's over, the plant is
Right.
all day long, I'll, I'll go home and I can hear it. I never paid attention before, and even in the house, I can still hear that hum.
Can hear it, I mean, yep, yep.
We were at the Arlington House, I think, Friday, Friday night, and it was really loud, right on Main Street, and so I thought, we'll go over by the plant, so we went over, you know, parked on Baker. It was quiet.
Right.
Really?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, it was like you're standing right next to the pipe almost.
Yeah, like the racetrack, too, some Saturdays, you don't hear a thing.
Would like to, if I could.
And the others, they're.
Yeah, it is definitely atmosphere and wind.
Wind, I think, has, you know, and the humidity plays a big part in it, denseness of the air.
Yeah. Few of those foggy mornings, it was really, foggy evenings, it was really bad.
And we have received complaints, you know, from the east side of town, from the west side of town, and from the north, I mean,
Yeah.
the only area we haven't had complaints are from the south.
That's right.
How about the cemetery, anybody complain?
Yeah. Shelley, why don't you call in some morning just to.
Yeah, I should, huh? Oh, look, can I make a motion to approve the bid from ESI for forty-five hundred dollars, that's their elongated.
Option two?
Yeah, option two.
Second.
Motion by council member Batch, or second by council member Cowell to approve the bid of ESI. Am I calling that the right thing?
Yep.
ESI, in the amount of four thousand five hundred dollars for option two, the long-term measurement version of their testing. Any other comments, questions?
Can I get a little flexibility with that number? I know in talking with them, um, they do have included that they will put together a report if we should want to talk with them or if we have questions about that report, I think that there may be benefit of having a conference call with Northland drying and with city staff to ask further questions, and then it would only be the cost of their time, won't be them driving out there, but it would be somebody who could answer.
Mean after the testing?
After, after the testing.
After the testing.
I'll include that in my motion, if that's okay.
Okay, again, the motion is, is by Bat-, you know, council member Batch, or second by council member Cowell, to approve of the long-term measurement option two version from ESI at forty-five hundred dollars, and to also include, um.
For, for consultation if needed.
Yeah.
Test results.
Potentially an extra charge for consultation of test results.
Are you agreeable?
Agreeable with that, all right. Hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carried. Okay, move to item twenty-five, approve or deny contract with Sibley County for consulting economic development services.
The city is currently under contract with, with the county for Amy Newsom to perform as the economic development director, her rate of pay was forty dollars, that is being increased to forty-two dollars an hour. We have had the benefit of having Amy for eight hours per week, plus an additional amount of time that was paid for by a grant that this, the county secured. So what I'm looking for from the council is to go ahead and to approve an agreement for consulting services for eight hours a week at forty-two dollars an hour for continuing Amy Newsom's services to December thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen.
I think she's worth an extra twenty dollars. I'll make a motion that way.
You are a spin-thrift.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by council member Yashewski, second by council member Batch, to approve the hiring, or approve the twenty-nine, twenty nineteen contract with Sibley County for consulting economic development services. Amy Newsom at a dollar hour, per hour rate of forty-two dollars at eight hours per week. Who seconded that?
I did.
You did, okay. And that motion by Yashewski, second by council member Batch. Any additional comments, questions, if not, hold on, favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion is carried. Item twenty-six, approve or deny twenty nineteen tax levy, resolution eighty-three dash twenty eighteen.
Provided for you in your packet is a, a resolution eighty-three twenty eighteen, laying out the general fund as well as the debt, which, putting that all together, the total certified levy we are looking at is a six percent increase, which would bring us to the number of eight hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. This was achieved by making some adjustments for the squad car, but it does include the significant projects that we have, which are extending utilities to Nankazi, which is being paid for from reserves in the water account. Fifty-seven thousand dollars, which will be put down as a down payment for replacing and installing street lights throughout the city, and the third item, which is the eight hundred megahertz antenna, which is about a hundred and twenty thousand. So we're able to get those three projects in there, we also have the general fund that is growing, looking at some of our increases. The biggest increase is in the police department for adding a, another officer, as well as increasing the current coordinator position from fifty, halftime equivalent to a full-time equivalent. And then adding the administration position from a halftime equivalent, adding on some additional time there as well, making that a four-fifths equivalent position, so, four days a week.
There, there was something, when you were reading those highlights, that just popped in my head that we never discussed. Did we pick a, a due date for the lights? Or, or, you know, 'cause they could stretch it out?
We don't, at this time, we don't have anybody that we're contracting with to do it. We do have the possibility of getting a loan through Minnesota Valley Electric Co-op. Basically, that loan would, we would pay down twenty-five percent, and then they would provide a ten-year interest-free loan for the remaining seventy-five percent of that cost.
Guessing if, you said a possibility, could, would it be too strong to say a probability of getting that loan? And if that loan would not be approved, then we would have to take a second look at the whole project?
Yes, yeah, no, I, I would agree.
Okay.
I mean, we're looking at a total cost of about two hundred and ten thousand, purchase the lights, and then also to pay someone to do the installation of them. So it would be your street lights as well as your more decorative acorn lights.
It would like it done this year.
It would be done, yeah.
Or it would need, or would it need to be because of the, the loan?
You know, I haven't dug into, find out all the details on it, um, so I don't know, but I could certainly look into that and see if there's a a requirement as to when the project has to be completed.
Yeah, probably need a timeline, you should probably
Yep.
get the ball rolling on it if we can.
I would imagine the first thing we do is apply for the loan, see if we get it, and then we can move ahead with the bidding and all of that.
So I was under the impression that we, even though we're doing all these big projects and such, that we still were gonna try and keep the tax levy at around four point five percent, not six percent, or lower, but.
Yeah, that's what I thought our last discussion was too, or like, maybe, I thought we had talked like four point nine or something like that, but.
We do have, if we look at the, if we look at the budget, we do have with a six percent increase, we do have about eighteen, eighteen thousand above expenses, which would basically equate into about two percent. So that is an option for the council, um, there was discussion about that, but in, I didn't know that that was the sentiment of the whole council that they wanted to come down, I knew there were. I knew there were a couple people who would express that. Uh, we can certainly make that change if that's what the council chooses to do. I will just comment to you that, you know, we do have significant projects going on. If ever there was a time to justify a six percent, I think that, you know, with eight-hundred megahertz with the streetlights and with Ninkazi, I mean, we're spending considerable amount of reserves, uh, to make all this happen. You know, but ultimately, that's your call. And if you wish to, to drop it down two percent, uh, I believe that you could do that.
So we would be right at zero on that eighteen thousand dollar line.
You'd be pretty, yeah, you'd be pretty close, and I could.
No fudge factor there.
You're still using reserves, you're still using reserves from your, from your water fund, um. You are.
Well, I think in those numbers, Jim, it's not just like, oh, this is exactly what it is. I think we gave a little bit of room, we didn't con, we weren't really, really tight, really, really hard with the pencil. We were a little soft to give it room. And I mean, I think the departments honestly have done great jobs sticking with their budgets, or staying under their budgets. Um, you know, we're having five or ten thousand left at the end of the year to do something that they really need to do. Um, so.
You know, we have an administrative assistant at thirty-two hours a week and I, when, when that individual's hired, and I'll tell you, I witnessed what she was handling last week when some of these things were happening. And, uh, we're glad we had, I think we're awfully, we should be fortunate that we have her in there. Very mature way of, of dealing with those things. Um, if we're ever looking at putting her full-time, which I think we said we'd look at after she had a chance to work with, you know, when Annie came back, we better have some money in the budget to cover that. So I would like to see a little cushion stay there, a little of the excess, but, uh, I, we don't wanna lose her. I'm telling you, we don't wanna lose her. We brought her in to give some assistance to our city administrator and, uh, the way things have been, you know, with, with Annie out on, uh, maternity leave and, and some other issues that have come up within the last month or so, um, there really hasn't been time that she's had to assist Pat.
So, I'm, I'm, so I'm kinda confused, 'cause we got an email saying that, um, that was gonna be possibly, or be included, 'cause am I correct?
That what was gonna be included, the?
The administration, I mean, or how we cut some place, some stuff from the library, or found some stuff from the library and did some other stuff and.
I think he's referring to this statement here that you made, after cutting the administrative budget to bare bones, carry this position administrative seventy-six, fifty-two has been.
Has, has to be.
Has to be added, so that would be over and above.
So that would be up to you, yeah.
Over and above what we're looking at right now.
Correct, that.
That would bump it up to about seven percent rather than six percent.
We, we currently have, with everything the way it is right now, we currently have about sixteen, well, eighteen thousand. You know, if you were to go ahead and put in the administrative assistant, that would be that seven thousand.
Basically, uh, seven thousand six hundred, which is close to another percentage.
So then you'd still have basically one percent left.
Well.
I can change, I can change those numbers. What I've brought to you is basically where, where we are at following the last meeting, where we said that we were going to go ahead and keep the administrative assistant at thirty-two.
Right.
Under the current situation. We did not have that factored into the two thousand and eighteen budget, because that was basically, uh, several months, uh, that she's been in that position. And she has been working, not thirty-two, but she has been working forty hours in order to help us to accommodate not having another staff person. I think she's been doing outstanding job. I know that she hasn't made this into an issue. I know that she's been out there on Saturday morning, working with Kirby, dealing with some different, um, cemetery-type issues. And I hope that you all realize that administration isn't just serving administration, but administration, I think, is, is supporting a lot of, uh, departments, whether, whether it be dealing with this whole cemetery issue, you know, or trying to free up Vicky's time so that she can focus on, on more. Right now, Vicky is spending a significant amount of time, and as you know, we are behind in terms of minutes. Um, but we are trying to find time to free up Vicky so that she can be on percent over at Police Department. But we're having a tough time making that happen because of other duties. But you tell me what you want and, uh,
Well.
we can make it.
If we take that eighteen thousand and cut it in half, it'd still be room for the, if we decide to add her full-time, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, that would at least drop it some, it'd probably be around that five, that five percent or something.
Four-point-nine.
What if you?
That's what I thought we talked about last time, was four-point-nine.
Well, I talked about three.
Oh, right.
Yeah, numbers are brought up.
You guys talked about a little bit more, but I think the four-point-nine is sticking in my head, although I don't wanna say that out loud. Four-point-nine, I would, I would, I would make a motion to have it be four-point-nine.
And let's see what we got for, what do we have to do to get down to that number?
Give me just a minute here, so what was the, what was the added number for the seven thousand?
Well, we're just gonna take this and take half of the excess at eighteen thousand.
Yeah, that's correct.
I mean, all, ultimately, all we're doing is using more reserves, correct?
Nine, nine thousand two hundred and nine dollars. Nine thousand two hundred and nine dollars you can add to the administrative line up on top.
Add what, nine thousand?
Two hundred.
Two hundred and nine dollars.
Nine thousand two hundred and nine, ninety-two oh nine.
Oh, to the administration.
Cuts it in half. Put, put that up in the administrative office line.
Let's just go two fifty-nine, let's just go two sixty-nine.
Um, yeah, you're in the wrong, you're in the wrong, there you go.
Two fifty-five or whatever.
Nine, two, five.
So instead of going two fifty-three, just go two sixty-three. I'm just gonna put it right here. So you'd have, uh, basically about seven thousand left.
And then put that to zero. And see what percentage we have.
But what does that?
But what does that?
That's out of line. Not that one. One above at the sixteen.
Oh, the sixty-eight thirty-one?
I don't know, that's our revenue or whatever.
Isn't that our?
That's like our local.
That's, that's the difference between your expenses and your revenue, so.
Yeah. And we're gonna leave it at there.
Yeah, so that would be less than roughly eight percent, eight thousand is one percent, so you're at about five. So.
Eight eighty-five, nine ninety-three.
I don't know, I guess, I left the last meeting at four-point-nine, I'm, I'm kinda sticking with it, guys.
I guess, I, I sorta gathered you were.
Whatever, whatever, whatever it takes to get there, then I'll.
Well, how about like five-point-one, are you gonna vote no against it? It's just a number, that's right.
Four-point-nine, six percent, eight thousand dollars. The scheme of things, it comes out to about three dollars a household.
I agree with Administrator Melvin that if there's any year we can justify what we're doing and, and with a six percent increase, I mean, if this, if you can't go out to the constituents and, and list the projects that we've got going and that we're gonna accomplish with the six percent increase, then I'm sorry, but.
I wanna make a motion to approve the two thousand and nineteen tax levy. Is that resolution eighty-three twenty-eighteen as presented originally?
I second it.
As it was or what?
At what's on the sheet, eight eighty-five, nine ninety-three.
Down to eighty-five.
Six percent increase.
Eight eighty-five, nine ninety-three.
Resolution eighty-three dash twenty-eighteen is introduced by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Yashewski. Uh, approving the resol, or the, um, budget at a grand total certified tax levy of eighty, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. It's a six percent increase over two thousand and eighteen. Additional comments, discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
First. Uh, yes.
Councilmember Highland?
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski?
Yes.
Councilmember Batchor?
Yes. Well, I know it's fair, but it's not, I.
Four votes, four votes in favor, none against, and one council member absent, the resolution is adopted. Alright.
You'll have to fix your sheet again, Tom.
What's that?
You'll have to fix your sheet again.
Yeah, well, does, so by approving that six percent now, does that impact, is that with the administration?
No, it's not.
It's however, whatever you presented us, that's what it is.
Yeah, we, you have eighteen thousand something excess.
Okay, okay, it's with that change?
Yeah, with that, no change, I mean, eighteen thousand excess.
So take that ten thousand, wherever that was, and
Take it out.
Take that back out, and then we have that eighteen thousand.
Yeah, whatever changes you just made, you'll have to
Fix.
Fix.
I think you just added ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So twenty-five to fifteen.
Maybe get that, and then we'll go to the next one, wait until you get that changed.
Okay.
Looking for this one?
No.
Oh, okay.
Nope, we.
You're done, you got it, you got it done?
Yep, this is the municipal budget.
Okay, now we're working on twenty-nineteen municipal budget, resolution eighty-four dash twenty-nineteen.
This is, this is just the.
This is the long listing of every line item. That is.
Well, it's good we didn't change anything.
And no, Jim, we're not gonna go through this line by line.
Come on.
Cause if we were to change something.
If I wake, if I go to sleep, I can help.
That would change.
This is just the same thing, just.
Every line item.
I'll introduce resolution eighty-four twenty-eighteen, a resolution adopting the two thousand and nineteen Arlington municipal budget.
Second.
Resolution eighty-four dash twenty-eighteen is introduced by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batchor, and that is a resolution adopting the, the two thousand and nineteen Arlington municipal budget. Any comments, questions, typos that you've noticed? We'll vote by roll call, Councilmember Batchor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent. Resolution is adopted. Councilmember Committee updates, are there any?
I've got the hospital.
I think you missed.
Did we miss something?
Well, is this Ninkazi closing, or is that just?
Ninkazi.
It isn't. What, uh, what item, what item number?
It's twenty-six.
Twenty-eight.
Oh, under there, okay, I see, I see, I just jumped in. Ninkazi closing, alright.
Simp, simply wanted to share with you that Ross, working with, uh, Ross and, uh, Rich, we had, uh, closing on, uh, Friday, so, there were two things that were kind of, uh, hanging us up a little bit, uh, the job creation fund as well as the tax abatement. Uh, the, the deal went through, uh, with the, still kinda hanging on as a contingency, the job creation fund. You as a council have already approved their, uh, application to the job creation fund. So we'll just wait until they're ready to submit that application and provide them with that letter. With regards to abatement, you guys really only have control over the city's tax abatement. So we hope that the county will pass the abatement. However, if for some reason they don't, uh, Ninkazi does have the option of getting out, correct, Ross?
Yes, well, they essentially sell the property back to the city, the same place.
Well, we'll play the Tony O. Stick with.
Okay, that's for the Ninkazi closing, and committee update?
Yes, two thousand and eighteen was a very successful year at Regview Sibley Medical Center. There was, uh, growth in inpatient volumes, clinic volumes, outpatient volumes. Uh, growth was over two thousand and seventeen volumes. Uh, a lot of activity around the emergency department as it was remodeled and expanded. The emerg, uh, veterans serve our community on top of the year-long construction project of the campus. Uh, we've been able to generate positive financials with operating, with a positive operating margin, I'm excited. This has been Nielsen, uh, who's filling in for, uh, Todd, since he moved up to Aiken. I'm, and he was excited that, that they can accomplish, or what they can accomplish in two thousand and nineteen. The budget, uh, for the next year or two thousand and nineteen, uh, plan is, you know, like always, is a little hairy when you set a budget, but they have lofty targets that, and that'll motivate the departments to continue to grow and find their ways to be more efficient. Opportunities to increase, uh, income with established group of providers. Uh, they're adding a new physician next fall, uh, here in Arlington. Uh, he's optimistic that the clinic volumes will continue to grow as we complete the remodeling and expansion of the emergency department. Uh, he expects that we will see volumes back to the sixteen and seventeen volumes. They'll put emphasis on understanding the drivers that impact, uh, inpatient volumes this coming year as they strive to keep more patients in Arlington and that, I thought, I wanted to emphasize that, that, uh, we're not just, uh, you know, somebody that's under Waco尼亚's wing, they are expecting a lot. They are expecting a lot out of us. Risks that we face, Medicare reimbursement can influence our financial performance significantly. Inpatient volumes may also are, are risks. The volumes have been volatile from the start of eighteen and to the end of eighteen, and the volatility is going to continue. And then, the, we spent a, a good time discussing what the board's job is and things that they can learn, um, for example, marketing update, emergency b- update population, health. Then they ask for sug- suggestions as to what the board would like to see for topics. And, and if there's anything that you as a, uh, the, uh, uh, city council would like the hospital to deal with, do so. But topics that they will either have s- somebody on staff or, uh, bring in a speaker, uh, to discuss things on mental health, uh, community events, kind of like coffee, but with a speaker. Like, excuse me, coffee with the mayor, I got a little ahead of myself, and then, um, the staff, what the staff feels about the board, what can the board do for, for the staff? Making conditions better to, um, things that are needed in the hospital, for the hospital, and so on. Have the CEO come in and speak and hear his point of view. Chemical dependency and what's, uh, how Ridgeview is attacking that scene or those issues. Uh, how do we, how do things get done? How the, the order of, or how does the hospital run? Then, uh, they also, uh, had nominated two, uh, previous board members to come, come back, uh, for us, a new three-year term to begin in January, and they were Lisa Farr and Diane Bias-Mozel. And, uh, that's pretty much our meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Any other discussion under open discussion, anything one wants to bring up? Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batshir, seconded by Councilmember Cowell to adjourn the meeting at nine twenty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carried.
Boy, what a marathon!
It's a lot of stuff.
We're recording here for the first hour, you have...
Yeah.
Imagine if we did the employee review.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of stuff.
I'm going Christmas shopping tomorrow.
Jim, on the TSE building, the homeless shelter? I thought you were gonna say homeless shelter slash water park. Will they get a shower while?
They have to shower, yeah.
Yeah, we can move all that from the, uh, navigation center out here.